To be honest with you, I got it's more challenging on the PDFs and the word some of the documents on PDFs and you're trying to compare and you're trying to read one and there's so many, so I got kind of lost without them.
Okay.
It's challenging, but anyway.
I can give that as feedback to Cheryl, of course.
Yeah, stuff winding down, but well, I probably will.
Can I do this? My first time.
Okay, so typically what we do, we'll start going through, but if we feel like that we want to get more policies passed through us and some are going to take longer, sometimes we'll just kind of hold those aside and maybe have another meeting later if it gets late, too late to go through.
But I read most of these, right, our existing policy, right, and then it's the new kind of updated one. It's very similar. What's the conversation? It's really about us adopting the new one.
Yep.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure I kind of.
Some of them are just so small and minute, just because it's like a new word or new terminology or like I think was it last year or the before it was like we had to put gender specific, you know, or gender identity, like we just had to add that word to it and that was it.
But did we just adopt this other one?
You do and then we just bring it to the school full committee and say upon recommendation.
We vote here to recommend for approval to the full committee, but that's all we do. And with the other note, if we have the opportunity, it's if there's changes to existing policies, one of the things that helped speed up these meetings last year was to have changes highlighted.
I can see that.
Yeah, well, and so like I do understand that there's a number of these that exist, but they're small changes, but when you have to read both MASCS and ours and try to compare them, it takes hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Or I say it took hours.
It can take hours.
Some of them did take hours. Some did.
Yeah, so you don't even get it from them. They don't, they don't just highlight the changes from their previous to this.
No, it's very convenient.
No, but you'll see like, you know, this one, we got the newsletter, so it gave you some of it, which is very helpful, because it just tells you basically where the regulation itself changes.
Sure.
So those should be okay. Janet, are you up and running?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've called it to order.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's one in particular you want to start with, if we can hit with some of the easy ones that have relatively minor changes or with there is a recommendation from the administration on what we, like if we ought to update to the MAS C policy or something, if we can start with those so that we can knock some off.
Sure, sure. I don't see really, maybe one or two of these might cause us more conversation than others. I think for the most part, it's pretty, you know, for the most part.
I was thinking the.
Yeah, that there's most of them pretty straight, some might may have had questions about. But Mia, let's take an easy one. I'd love you guys just point out which ones, which one do you think would be easy.
How about like cameras in schools, ECAF, something that are relatively. We already have one.
Mm-hmm. So yours was adopted in March of 2012. And then you got the extensive changes that MCA, MAS C actually is their policy and it's quite more pronounced.
I didn't have issue with anything that was in here.
Okay.
I just had questions about what isn't in here, I guess, and maybe you can tell me if that's out of scope or whatever, but you know, part of it is these security cameras are recording, right?
Yes.
So how long are we retaining? And what, under what conditions can you turn over copies of these?
So we turn over copies of those when sometimes like police could ask for them.
Right, do you need a court order? Under what conditions do we give them because of other privacy type of things related to people in school? Isn't specifically addressed in this, but we are capturing this stuff and storing it.
Yeah. I think that's actually a great question. We don't really, you know, our security cameras are putting into place at the elementary schools, so there hasn't been really much of anything that's actually in place for those right now, because so we're in the process of doing that.
Right, but Tejant we've had.
But Tejant we've had them. We have had police sit with us and investigate some of the cameras with us. We've had situations that have come up. We've had parents sometimes have to sit if they, when it's their child, when they're telling us that a situation has happened, to prove to the parent that that's not necessarily the case, or yes, it confirms the case.
So sharing, is that the discretion of administration?
Right, pretty much.
Do we need to say that? How long do you retain copies?
I don't know. That's a good question.
That's something that, just to comment, just because it's aimed at the public, certain things are procedure versus policy.
Yeah.
And and on this particular policy, when it first came, when we first started, we're talking about the sadness, we were planning all the cameras in Tejant, and there was a lot of talk at the time about, you know, we really, yeah, it isn't something that we necessarily want to place into public policy.
Mm-hmm.
Because certain information, you don't necessarily, it's inappropriate to share.
Right.
And so as you start getting into specifics about how it's retained, where it's retained, and how long it's retained, I kind of.
Becomes more managerial.
I kind of see that as more under the administration.
Okay, I didn't know if there was any laws or regulations about that stuff that we need to keep and keep going.
No, and actually, I believe that the ones at Tejant, I believe they're all served into the actual server, but how long that stays in the server before it goes, I don't know. I don't know if it's three months, I don't know if it's six months, I don't know if it's a year, I don't know, but I can ask that question to Diana, Helen, or Paul would know, because he was part of the setup for that.
I would almost not want to necessarily share something like that, simply because, you know, you don't know what might come up, and if people see it in opportunity, you know, hey, well, but then we have it for two months or something.
I know some schools, they would actually only keep it for like 30 days.
Because I think we have a responsibility, not if you're going to keep it, to keep it secure, and not to keep it forever, right, because there are.
Right.
Things can come back to haunt people, right? And so I know that's not our intent at all.
And it's out of context or whatever, and it's not the purpose, right?
Yeah, it's not the purpose.
No, I'm not trying to recommend keeping anything forever, A, that would be expensive and in pain, but there's probably some reasonable period of time.
I will tell you though, in regards to our security cameras, one thing that we don't currently have, that I've spoken to the chief of police here, is which we're looking into, and I just had Paul, I just gave Paul another couple of apps yesterday to look at, is the capacity that if the police have to look in the building, that they can be outside with their cruiser, and we, we have to hit the release to allow it to happen, but then they can see, like let's say there's an intruder or something like that, they can actually see where the, where are the wings.
Without actually coming into.
And what's going on without actually coming into the school.
So it does work in conjunction with their system.
That's what we're, that's what we're developing, that's what we're looking at doing.
Do we have signs as you enter this school that says that the premise is monitored?
That's a good question.
Do they actually do some of those things?
I think we do, although we should confirm it.
Yeah. But I have any, you know, I think this hits the mark, was no issues with that, it's kind of, it just brings up that whole topic.
Mm-hmm. I don't think in our schools, it's as big a topic as in some schools.
Right.
Which is nice, that's one element there, but it could become.
Right.
It is something that I think we need to make, I think people should be aware of, but I don't necessarily want to share too much, just because that could be a security issue of a different sort, you know, with some things that they can get their hands on something that we might not want, you know, whatever, if it gets into, you know, is that. But with the other, no, and I didn't know if you had noticed, I think the MAS C, MAS C one, if I'm recalling it from when I read all this, the MAS C one, we restrict it just to the superintendent and not principal, and I think our current one is principal or superintendent. I didn't know if, if you have an opinion about that, but I, I just wanted to ask, you know, is, is that a change that you either carry the way about or?
Not necessarily, no, I just think, I think what, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying here, is that you're saying access to video recordings from security students should be limited to school administrators, superintendent designee, school principal designee? Is that what you're talking about, so it gave the option of having superintendent and principal?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, because honestly, sometimes Diane has to have access to those and do things that.
She's responsible for the building.
She's responsible in that building, right, and I just let her do what she needs to do in that building for those.
I just want to ask the question.
Yep.
All right, so we are.
With Mavic, sometimes they'll say, do you want to see? I'm like, nope, I'm all set. You've seen it, we're good.
So do we want to make a motion to adopt the MAS C proposed policy, ECAF, with security cameras in schools, in place of our BBPS existing policy?
Is this where I say some moved?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. Okay.
Some moved?
And I'll second that.
I'll vote.
Yep.
Yea.
All right, that one will go forward.
All right.
All right.
You see, that was a relatively quick one, I thought, okay.
Do you want to go back to the emergency plans, or?
Oh, sure, sure. I'm sorry, I was trying to pick one that I thought would be, because there are some in here that I think will take a little bit.
All right.
So this is EBC.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can you highlight some of the changes here?
Yeah, so if you look at basically the third paragraph, what you currently have, and this was adopted, by the way, also in August of 2012, but you'll see it says superintendent shall develop in consultation with the school nurses, school physicians, athletic coaches, trainers, and local, it says local medical service agencies. Here, they're talking about fire and emergency personnel. That's one of the terms.
That's a big addition, right? That was highlighting this.
Right, so that's.
And that annually, it's the other thing.
Right, so if you go through, we have to do this, we have to submit this by September 1st now of every year, so that's a new requirement, so this would be a good one to pass, just so that we're in accordance with the.
Do we take out the school physician then, because it doesn't apply?
Where do you see that? Did I miss it?
Yeah, just a full of people that here, you know, is developing consultation with school nurse, school physicians, we don't have one.
Yes, actually, we do, by law, we have to. And we do have a school physician, this year we hired a new school physician, it's actually Dr. Salmonitas.
So it's a retainer and just not present, or?
Right, what it is, is it's on call, so let's say.
Okay.
So when we do physicals, sometimes we'll have the school physician come in, we'll do some of the physicals if we need them done, and say I have an employee that I feel I want medically looked at onsite, I can call the physician to come in. Yep.
Good, thank you.
And we need actual advice about some of the medication that might be beyond the nurses' expertise, we'll call in a school physician.
Would you have any concerns with the MAS C?
I have no concerns with this one, actually. They haven't really changed much, other than the title and the fact that it has to be an annual.
Right, although I think we have to do that annually, right?
I thought we did, but that's maybe a specific thing.
You're kind of supposed to, it was really informally done. We've done it, actually, we started it in 2013, we did it last year, we just did it again this year, and I just asked Karen, we're waiting for one principal to complete the plan, to submit, and Karen actually submits it on my behalf, she's my designee. So, and then the other piece, like I said, is currently, it says plans after number seven on the current one, plan should be submitted at least three, every three years by September 1st, this one says so annually review the responses, sequence with local police and fire officials, and actually, we have the police and fire, all the principals were just advising the administration retreat last week, that they're supposed to be in contact with them all between this week and next week, to make sure everything's all in alignment.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion to recommend the, the adoption of policy EBC emergency plans from MAS C in place of our current BBPS policy.
Some moved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Two of them, right down. All right.
What next?
You want to just go down the line, give them an instruction, access to electronic media. So the big piece that you see, the first big piece is the safety procedures and guidelines, actually saying that, you know, superintendent or designee is what you currently have, and now they're saying superintendent and the director of technology are collaboratively basically responsible for making sure that the procedures are implemented.
That's basically what we, what we have rights in our practice, I think.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And that's the primary change.
That's really a primary change there in that whole, you know, some of the, just the terminology that they use, more or less.
Our policy was already in place.
Yep.
I was looking at this copy and it didn't show when it was implemented.
You know, like we had, for example, in the current one, it says controlling access by minors to inappropriate matter on the internet and world wide web, we said controlling access to minors but to inappropriate and the internet as defined by, because now there's an actual children internet protection act. They didn't have one before, now they have one, and now they also have a children's online privacy protection act, so we just were very vague with internet and world wide web, because they didn't have those acts in place.
Okay, so that'll expand then, whatever, some specific things that'll have to be done because of this policy, so that'll change some activities, right, then?
Well, we've actually, we've been kind of following the act anyway.
Oh, we have, okay.
Yeah, so in other words, children ages grades four to 12 have access, but children K to three have minimal access, so their access to the internet and capacity in the school building is different than grades four through 12. And that's all because of the age.
Something on the computer that restricts them, or the computer itself?
No, it's actually the aid, the access that they, because when they get access, they go on with their email address.
Is governed at that point, so their ID kind of governs where they, okay, so that's the service that provided.
Yep, now K to three, I think they're not given their email access, it's in there, but they're not given that access, so they get the access through the teacher-directed access of the internet.
Okay.
The way the teacher sets up the classroom. And we used to have just the word, you know, hacking, but now we have hacking, viruses, you know, all those other things.
That's all right, that's all right, which is fine.
Yep. And then they have that in our digital use, where we didn't really have that in here, audit of use is really what we had.
All right, so you're okay with the MAS C version? Yes, cool, okay, so we need a motion to, to adopt, to recommend adoption of policy I and I J N D from MAS C in place of the current BBPS policy.
Some moved?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
There goes the question.
This one, I actually think, technology acceptable use policy, I think we're a lot more thorough than what the MAS C. Except I like, we even have an agreement of understanding form, we don't vote to approve the form, just the policy, but I like that our form actually requires parental guardian signature and consent.
That's the B, I don't have the E. The I J N D B dash E is already in place there, right?
Well, right, the E is our form, that's why I was just saying, that's the form that we currently use.
Right.
So that's not really, you were just given that just as an FYI, that that's what we use. But my recommendation on this one, honestly, is to have Paul go over it with Dave McCarthy, and to see if there's something that's really sticking out to him, that I'm thinking in these bullets.
With Dave McCarthy?
Dave McCarthy is the, the technology, our technician, technology technician that does all the internet work and so forth, and works with communication with the parent, the teachers.
Okay.
But I, just to make sure that I'm not, I'm not misunderstanding something, so that would be my recommendation, and we hold this for a future meeting, see if there's any feedback that he has. I just think we're so thorough, we, you know, we've got 20 different, you know, provisions here, and I don't want us to eliminate down to this and then we miss something here that's important.
Okay. Can we, perhaps this isn't as big a thing as I think it's going to be?
Okay.
The two that I started getting uncomfortable with, where the next two, the I J N D C and I J N D D.
Yep.
Can we jump to the others first, I think we can go a little faster?
Sure. Head injury. That's JJI F, just for regulations, we have to review these every two years, and you also were given a note from Elizabeth Valerio about personal injury liability to student athletes.
Is that one based on the Thayer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, Ugin versus Thayer Academy.
Yeah.
You know, honestly, it's just to review them every year, but our, our policy is actually in alignment still with all the regulations. We updated this in 2013, in October 2013, and what we did was we've got the policy right and the policy. So we were just bringing it in as for an example, but is there something that you saw, Tom or Larry, in the findings of the case?
Yeah, I think it seemed much more specifically calling out, maybe I didn't capture this right, that the coach must exercise ordinary care in assuring health and safety of their student athletes, of directing ownership of that to the coach.
Okay.
And the other thing I found in that was. What does the district do to ensure that concussion protocols are strictly followed by coaches and athletic departments? Probably not as much, I think we have pretty good enactment of that.
So, yeah, so what we do is Peter Mack, he has the athletic director, he does take care of that every year.
Firsthand, yes, aware of that. The other thing from our policy, it says before the beginning, any extracurricular athletic activity, the following people will participate in training. It doesn't really talk about what the frequency of that is. Is that annually, is that each season?
That's an annual.
And then I think we should explicitly say that, you know, if that's, if that's the case with it.
That's a good point.
Following people in, because it wouldn't be each season, because.
They just have to be able to show they've been trained, I didn't realize.
We probably.
I didn't even think about that.
Yeah, just make sure they're doing it annually, if they strip.
Interesting, okay.
So. Because this Thayer thing did kind of seem to, at least the opinion of this was that the coach, right, really is the one who didn't follow up on anything, or didn't really do. I'm not sure if our policy enough explicitly falls out of that.
Well, what your policy basically does, it says that you have to follow the act, an act relative to safety, which is this.
You think it's covered in that?
Regulation, so if you're following regulation, we just have to have documented evidence that we're following the regulation, and that would be Peter's role as the athletic director, to make sure the regs are being followed.
But is the coach that's on the field going, taking, exercising ordinary care and assuring the health and safety? I know Peter is, right, but he's not there on, on the.
Right, right, it's his role in.
And so it would be his responsibility at the now annual training to make it very clear that that is the responsibility of the coach on the field.
Interesting, so he has a question, then, if we look at that, without sounding like it's managerial, but actually looking like it more of a policy piece, if we look at the Berlin Boys and Public Schools will provide protocols to standardize procedures for persons involved in the prevention, training, and management of head injuries, including return to activity decisions, and we could add that statement by exercising ordinary care and assuring the health and safety of the athletic students, the student athletes.
That'd be the right question. You know, and then looking at this training again, it actually says down here, training and education will be repeated every subsequent year, so I think we recovered, just catch it the first time.
Yep, so I don't have to put that here, because it's, okay, so if we say management head injury, including return to activity decisions by exercising.
I'm sorry, let's do, put it back, this one, this one actually is directed to students, to training students and parents.
Okay.
Or we want the staff, the sports coaches, whatever.
Is it, is it, well, it would be anyone who's coaching.
Yeah, right.
However we do. Which could be a lot different roles, and so if we just keep it as who are.
And actually, it's, since this is the regs, we can't change what the regs say, because this is the reg, but we can put something in here, in the actual policy itself, so annual training will be provided as defined through the Act of Relative Safety Regulations.
Yeah, sure.
So what if we do this? The Berlin Boys and Public Schools have established a policy to be in compliance with the Massachusetts law. Entitled an Act Relative to Safety Regulations for School Athletic Program. An Act to protect the safety and wellness of young athletes through annual training. Just put it at the end. Does that make sense?
Through annual training. It may, does it reference who you're training?
So, no, so let's just do this. Annual training. Will be. Provided. As defined. In. What do we even call this? Do we call, what, in the, should I say, in the act?
Yeah. So I'm just trying to think.
Okay. All right. So add about the annual training, and then we'll add by exercising ordinary care and assuring the health and safety of their student athletes. I'll add that at the end. Does that make sense?
Yes. How do we? So we're. We're just making those changes.
To the current policy.
All right.
That's good. So we are moving to recommend. That current policy, J J I F, be amended as, as, as discussed. So moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The physical restraint of students.
Hey, that looks good.
I don't think I ever read this one before.
This is an interesting one.
Yes.
And it was also interesting how. Much into the weeds, some of the recent.
Yes.
Guidance has been.
So. There's a, this is really a hot topic in public schools. And.
I didn't get that impression.
Yeah. Hot topic in some schools, more so than not here. I mean, we haven't. I've been here for three years, and in my fourth year, I haven't even had one physical restraint.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I do the restraint trainings three times a year to our staff. We have many teachers here that are trained in knowing how to do. Restraints, because I'm a, I'm a certified trainer. So I do it, but I, I will, I do.
That's good.
And in other school systems, where I've taught, we would have to do restraints. At least once a week. In some schools here, that's just, you don't hear it happening. Little children, little bull thing, or whatever, and those staff trained, they, they might have to know how to, you know, redirect them. That's as extensive as a restraint would be. It would be a redirection. And when you are redirecting them and, and stopping them from egress of the direction they want to go, even by blocking, it's considered restraint. So it's very technical with how it's become.
Is, I was kind of thinking as I was, I was reading through, just like, you know. At the, at that moment. It's, I mean, you like to think about how, how the emergency in my service providers. Go through years and years of training, just rehearsing every action, so it becomes. For my teachers, something to this extent, when you're in the moment, and you haven't been practicing and practicing. It's getting so specific that it's just like, okay, I can take this action, but I can't do that action. Oh, wait, and at that point. With the kids out, you have the door in this particular example. And. I, I don't know, I, I think it adds a little bit of a challenge that maybe, like I said, I think it's getting you into the weeds.
These, these types of policies are actually set up, honestly, to, you know, obviously protect all school systems, but these are more in alignment with. Schools like NECC or Meramec, schools or, you know, those types of residential placements, Devro Foundation. You know, where they have to do restraints every day. I mean, there's, there's some, you know, out of district placements that the rooms are actually, you know. With padding all over the rooms, and the kids are just hurting themselves, and they're, and they're trying to stop them from hurting themselves constantly, so. We're not in that position. We're not in, we don't have extended restraints. We don't have, you know, those types of things are just not. Can't say it can never happen, right, but it's just, that would be so out of the norm, I'd be getting a phone call in five seconds flat to get down there. Because it's just not something that they are used to.
Right, and it, and that's where, I guess, as, as I was reading through. I started thinking, okay, so it's our responsibility to, to have everyone trained on this. And recognizing, I've not had one of those types of schools where they are, are trained and experienced on a regular basis, and probably know exactly what they can and can't do in a moment's time. And I'm just wondering if this is, if this is getting so specific, so detailed, so. So that, that is, is, is a, even an annual training. Where all this is reviewed, is that sufficient to be confident that someone's gonna, you know, take the right action at the right time? And a lot of this is to help protect the student, the staff, the school, the district, and.
And other students that are around.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I understand that's not gonna, we aren't gonna have the kind of issues that some schools have. But it just makes me nervous when we start getting. On something that is an in the moment type thing. It just makes me nervous that, is that detailed, and they get trained, and that's it.
But it's a policy we have to address, right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
You have to.
I hear your concern, you know.
I will say, though, that where it says the superintendent will develop procedures identifying, I would say the superintendent will designate. Because you're in a smaller school system where, I mean, I particularly do do this, but I do it in collaboration with Karen Mullner. Who's also lieutenant line officer, the special ed director, because you have to put a lot of those kids are, are usually, you know. Students who are really at risk, social, emotional, are usually the ones that we would be working with, if they're on 504, special education. Other than outstanding circumstances, you work with some of the other, you know, populations, but. So I would say, you know, or designate, because we've also had a BCBA who, we just, we got her trained last year, so she could start taking over. The training sessions, but I'll be taking them back over this year.
His seclusion and timeout?
Because she just gave us her notice this week. Yeah, so I said to Karen, sign me up, like, because I have to get my research.
She just gave it to us this week.
That's, that's so close to.
We had two people that just gave out their notice this week.
Someone else?
Someone at Berlin. Yeah, got a full-time position, so.
Is seclusion and timeout something that impacts our school?
Um, yeah, that's actually really frowned upon. Do you see that somewhere in particular?
No, I mean, there's a talk about, you know, changes to that.
Yeah, oh yeah, you have to make changes to that. So the word, you know, the timeout is a derogatory, you know, to put somebody in timeout, but you can, you know, they can have a space to reflect. It's very different than putting them in timeout, right? It's all the politically correct. That's also the way in which it's being used, right? We want to be more of a positive approach, or that's more of a negative.
So we basically look to adopt the MASC?
Yep, yep. I looked over this one as well.
Is there anything that ours, that, that needs to carry over, had specific forms?
No, the only, well, the only thing that they, did you see anything in here about chemical restraint?
Did I read this somewhere?
Although, I didn't think that was allowed.
It's not allowed, so I just want to make sure there's a new one that we.
Specifically say that, right?
I thought, yeah, there was.
Because on the original one, we had chemical restraint. Like, oh, you're gonna start doing having those. No, we don't use nitrous in our schools. So, yeah, I think the one that's actually in here, it streamlines, because we don't need to use that type of terminology at all. It's not even here.
Because it's not even gonna be an option, right?
Right. You know, like here where they talk about a prone restraint, and it says we're permitted. Those, they're permitted, that C O, six oh three CMR, forty six point oh three. That actually is not a public school setting. That's private residential, because we can't do prone restraints in public schools. That's a, that's a face-down restraint. We don't do those here.
Yeah, our, our old policy didn't mention chemical restraint.
That's what I mean, our own, I was like, oh, or even seclusion restraint. It's not, that's not allowed, so. Even though it's, that is reiterated here, the use of tunnel procedures during which a staff member means accessible to the student, so not because of the seclusion restraint. In other words, if they're going into a space to reflect or whatever, you can't actually 100% seclude them where you can't have access. We even, we even talk about the space in which they're able to use, whether a door swings in or out. You know, you have to think about those kind of spaces. To, sometimes their adrenaline, I've seen, I've seen kids that get so uptight, and the door's closed, and then they can go into a seizure. You can't get them, because they're now up against the door. You know, those kind of things you have to think about, so.
Sure.
You know, I speak about all of that in our, in the trainings that I provide to them. It's a full-day training that they get.
All right, so the goal is to adopt the MASC version of this. So.
So moved.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, inoculations of students.
Actually, this is, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be controversial here, but I think it is kind of a big. It's a big thing now. I don't know if it's as big a thing here, but, I mean, it's one of those challenging issues where you can see both sides. You know, and.
So we do have some religious exceptions in each school.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
And, and, and the, the, going back and forth here, was talking about. Is, is it, this is where, I thought it was very iffy. It, it calls out if, if it's, if it's being claimed. How do you know whether it's being claimed as a religious-based exception versus if it is a, and what the word in here was. A, like, less sincere. Okay, so how are you gonna make that judgment?
Yeah. Do you have that work? Tom, there was not an MASC.
Yeah, no. It wasn't called out in this one, was it? That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, no.
I don't know where I put that. It was the.
You've got the administration of the government, part one, title twelve, education, chapter seventy-six, school attendance. And section fifteen, vaccinations and.
That was tied to. Looking at the back of that.
Oh, you have it there, okay. This one?
Was that the end of one of the other ones? Why, why don't I think I have that?
But it was interesting that at least 154 people in the United States have been diagnosed with measles since January first, and this was in March. For a matter of three months, there were 154 people in the United States. And then it said in California, state officials report. That at least 123 of those people have been infected in California alone.
Yeah.
Disneyland was where the beginning break was in December of 2014.
I, I also thought it was interesting that, that we can't. We can't do anything unless the Department of Health deems it an emergency. And. Interesting, very interesting stuff.
Everybody's belief is their belief, and. Have to think about safety. And not worry about some of those individuals that.
Right, that's the balance.
Come, right.
You know, I, I just, I thought that, I thought that that, the guidance was. Really insufficient. Because it's basically, you know, it really doesn't say how you determine if it's a, a, a less sincere versus a. I don't remember what they called it, like.
Right.
Like a fervent believer, I, I think that was.
It's too much. It seems like a lot of.
The actual word. Yeah, and, and, and because it can be a public health issue. You know, so depending which hat you have on at the moment, or with the, with the, like, perspective that you're trying to see at that point. I can see that getting very messy. But the guidance that we've gotten isn't really helping.
I don't think it's helping you much at all. I, I can see where you're still having so many people that. Can come in here with a. Potential illness.
Because that's been the guidance, I don't know that we have the, I don't know that we have the grounds to basically go.
Different from it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't. You don't. My recommendation would be to take this section fifteen and add it to your. You know, as. As reported in. That would be my, because then I think you'd be covered.
Yeah.
You know, that immunization would not be in the best interest of the child by the student's parent, guardianship, and vaccination, contritish religious beliefs. But here it says. Just want to make sure.
Whose physician in those cases? Is this the school's physician, or are we talking about they need to supply?
It's a great, that's a great question. I would say, it just says from a doctor, so who's doctor, right?
I guess who's, who's responsible for. Saying, you know, making that, that call.
The nurse actually follows the policy, the school nurse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Am I misunderstanding you?
Yeah. It talks about the, the physician in charge of the school health program.
It's our physician, then?
Yeah, but what happens is you have our physician that might, that might end up saying something different. And so there is that risk, and we're gonna address that. So if, if, if that family's physician.
It's up to the family to, to supply this type of certification from physician, as we're saying.
Yes. And that's what currently happens.
Okay. And then if they don't agree. Apparently it's out of our hands, because it.
And it's generally accepted that we're talking about medically certified in the state of Massachusetts physicians.
But you can put in here that.
It's just a very general term.
It is.
Physician in this thing could mean. A holistic type, you know, that. But that's where, but that's where it gets loose, right? And if you just want to be specific about this. Someone's holistic physical.
So do we want.
Advisor doesn't qualify as a certified medical doctor in the state of Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts, right, an OD is not, right?
Yeah.
Certified in Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, so I think you, I think it's an excellent idea to add a.
Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, a certified.
Medical doctor, whatever it is.
Medical physician.
Medical physician, or, yeah.
Whatever the proper term is for that.
That's good. That's good.
So do we add it into our current, or are we going to just bring this? Because, you know, one of the things I was noticing.
You were gonna add this. You were gonna add this.
Yep.
Section fifteen to, right?
Some of it's, I'm almost wondering.
Print, maybe it's just the definition of physician in this.
Well, because immunization against diphtheria, whooping cough, right? They have diphtheria, pertussis, tetanus, measles.
And other such communicable.
Diseases.
Diseases. I think that's, you catch them. How about as, you know, as more defined by.
Pertussis. I have to add pertussis in here. And then I think. I think you can get rid of the only exception to these requirements will be written from the doctor, right? Because then we add this bottom, these bottom two things in here.
Yeah, I think you can. And we'll add the reference. If we don't already have that on our, I think we do have the reference on the, the Yoda.
Here, let her say I A Massachusetts. So, yeah, so if we say students entering school for the first time, whether at kindergarten or through transfer from another school system, will be required to present a physician's certificate, attesting to immunization against, and then I just added, you know, I just made sure those all matched, right? And other communicable diseases as may be specified from time to time by the Department of Public Health. I took the rest of that out and then I said these last two paragraphs we would add in here.
Okay. Okay.
Sound okay?
So we're going to revise our policy, J L C B, as, as discussed. So any motion?
My second. Oh, it's a wait, so moved.
And I'll second. That's fine, either way. All in there?
Aye.
I also wanted to just let you know, one of the things that one of the nurses in the school said is let N A D know that we require a letter from parents that is kept in each student's file if they are claiming a religious exemption. They're usually able to quote the law and that allows them with the exemption. This is the highest immunization rate in the country is actually Mississippi, where only medical exceptions are allowed. That was interesting. Okay. Sports fees was something that.
Ah, yes.
We just wanted to go over the, to hunt those sports fees and where we were and where we ended up and so forth. I will say that our sports fees are number. You'll see that on Tuesday anyway, our athletic revolving, how we ended up after the first year, because Julie will be going over that report on Tuesday.
That was one of the questions that came up the last time we talked about, right?
Yeah. And all we had to do was just, you know, review this to see if it had an impact. I will tell you that after this first year, it really didn't have much of an impact one way or the other.
When you say impact, meaning the raising?
Right, the raising, our ending number in our revolving account didn't fluctuate as much as we thought it was going to. It didn't go up much higher than what we thought it was going to.
Did we see any, big questions out there? Do we see any reduction in our kids participating? I find this, this layout so confusing.
I do too.
Yeah.
To be fair, that's just, like, Peter and Diane just compiled something for the, with the, with the subcommittee last time, so it was not really formally requested.
But it's been kinda brought through where maybe.
Right, it's just the one that we, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't too sure what it was trying to, what story it was telling.
Yeah, we never really, I don't think we're really clear when we spoke to Diane and Peter of exactly. So they were putting bits and pieces in there of what it would look like. But I can ask if there was any reduction in student participation. I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess no.
I didn't think so, but that was one of our concerns going in. If we raise the fees, is it gonna have less people participating?
Yeah.
Hopefully not.
We also have that middle school too, the sixth grade that's been able to be a part, where we didn't have that in previous years either.
So that's added funds to the.
I think so. But I'll ask them and I'll bring that back to the committee.
Will they be coming back and recommending increase?
We were really waiting, I know, till after this year. Peter and Diane, they wanted to have one full year to see what the actual impact was. We had said we were gonna review it in, in, I think, April or May, whatever we said. It's just too soon because we weren't done with all the sports yet. So I know they're, they're still working. Peter's, you know, had this summer off, except now just getting going again with the fall sports. So I'm not sure Peter's had time to talk with the finance department yet to talk about where they are.
The, the big concern was that we don't have a, we don't have like a savings account to.
Right.
Put towards.
For this track.
Or, and, and I don't know if it should be specific to the track, but it should be just somewhere where, when we get a big hit on some sort of maintenance or repair item that that is sports related. And there was a lot of talk, I think, about how we can legally do that.
That's right.
Because if we go to our town meetings, every, but in ten years with the big bill, you know, something can be appreciated.
Right. I will tell you, like, if you think about the track, for example, technically we're on year, we're on year three already with that track. And every seven to ten years you replace a track.
I never know in a school to replace a track every ten years.
I don't know. They're just saying, they're just saying that's the, that's the lifespan of the track is every seven to ten years is typically what they say. And you could be right. I don't know enough about them to tell you.
Crack, send it a little.
Oh, it will, sure. I think fill them in, but it's different than replacing.
And.
But we, I totally.
We may end up going that path at some point because we might need to, but because we put millions of dollars into this, I would just assume have the, had the foresight to be.
Totally planning.
To maintain that investment because, as you know, we're all paying for it in our taxes.
Yep. I agree. I think we should be trying to figure out some way to put a fund aside for these maintenance types of things so it's not some huge fee or.
I mean, you have an athletic revolving account, and that's what we were saying, that we could build up that athletic revolving account, that we could be using it for athletics or fields or anything like that, because currently that's what you already have. The other idea is that schools have been talking about, and Dr. Hammond actually has been presenting this to other regional systems, is the idea of a stabilization fund.
Right.
And how you can have, you know, towns have stabilization funds. And typically what you do is, you know, your E and D, you'd want, you can't have more than five percent in your E and D. But if you have money for stabilization fund and then you say you're gonna take so much of your money each year and put it into the stabilization fund, the issue with something like that is then are you, as a town's taxpayer on the other side of that table, I would be saying, are you inflating your budget so that then you can be building your stabilization? And is that the use of taxpayers, right?
But, but towns do it.
I knew that. But I'm just saying, you have to just kinda think of a, of a strategy of how that would work and, and be clear with the town. Now, what they've been trying to do, right? How do you explain it so people don't say, well, they're just trying to, you know, keep money or, you know, or hide money or, you know, you hear those stories in all different towns.
They think about the towns now, yeah.
Right? So, you know, so you have to kinda think about how is that presented? And, but I think if you have it at this community, in my experience, I know I'm still three years new, going into my fourth year, but in my experience here is I think as long as the townspeople understand the purpose and the plan behind it and that they can see that you're doing long-term planning, it's much more well-accepted because you're being very open and open, honest communication, you know, with both towns is very much respected. And I think.
What's the difference with that than the revolving that you were talking about before? Didn't seem to say, have the same issues with that.
No, because.
When you aren't paying into that from, the taxpayer is paying into that from the fees.
Only from the fees. I get.
Not from your general budget or anything like that. It's from your fees.
Only your fees.
So it, it's only the people who are participating are feeding that fund, which is easier for people to stomach it.
Right.
Right. The other side, though, you could say, well, you're putting a disproportionate amount of your budget in here and your fees are just going to this revolving.
Well, it's, you're absolutely right, except ultimately, not every expense can be paid out each year. And so if you have anything, not just this that you have to do, you know, once every five years, once every ten years, the way things are structured and the way and what people are used to, it, it, there's not an easy, great way to do that, that people are, are accepting because every year everyone hears how everything is, is tight and we're increasing your taxes. And so it, it, it puts us in a bad spot because it, it comes down to, as you're saying, how we present this information. And it isn't just present it once and say, hey, this is what we're doing. You have to constantly remind people this is what we're doing and this is the upside. We aren't gonna have to hit you with a bill for unread service later.
We're not coming back with a big capital improvement request for this.
And it's your boiler one out or something like that, right? For that, other types of things, right?
Those are the types of things, yeah. Or now the water heater, you know, that you need the backup water heater, you know, or something like that. Well, that's, that's a small price.
But it doesn't make sense.
But it's those kind of things, yeah.
I think it's important about transparency and intent and purpose. Okay.
So I'll get those questions.
So at this stage, we are, our, our, our intent was to talk about and take a look at, but it was not our, you didn't intend to, to come back with any kind of a recommendation for change.
Okay.
Nope. It was just advised to the committee to just review it and see.
Yep.
How we've done. So I can get some more updated information after Peter and.
I think that's important to say probably at the onset that this isn't about increasing our fees, right? Because I think that's.
It's about where do we stand, what was the result of what we did last time. Yep, and, right. Okay. I will say I don't think it really had much of an impact, but.
That's good.
I don't wanna say for sure. So, right now, can we go to I?
Yes.
I J N D C about the internet publication. So what we do have is consent. We have a form place. But we never had a policy. So this one would not go in, because we didn't have a policy, Tom, this one would go in as a first read for the school committee, not as part of your consent to adopt the changes.
Unless we.
Unless we did a wave.
I don't think they'll wanna waive this.
No.
No, I think whenever we can, we might as well go through the process of.
Right.
First read.
It's not like.
It, 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 it isn't that you're trying to push something through. You're, you want people to take the time.
Yeah, to look at it.
To understand what they're standing up for.
Right, exactly.
I think it's interesting that we never officially had a policy, but if you look at the supervision and approval websites, we've followed that. You know, you had a webmaster for yourself and Paul has been the key webmaster for anything that goes through.
I, I do think it's interesting that we have to call that, well, or M A S C is recommending that we call out standards like grammatically correct, free of spilling errors. Just, I got smart glass reading through that. As far as, as, as what, what they're proposing here, though, there wasn't anything that was wrong, I don't think.
Nope, pretty straightforward, quite good stuff to have in a policy.
I think it's a good step.
And, and you aren't recommending any changes to our form either, right?
Nope. Which, again, you guys wouldn't hold on that anyway.
Though, do you reference the policy in the form that you've read and understood and, you know?
That's a good question.
I can, yeah, well, we wouldn't because we never had a policy.
Yeah, but we may wanna.
So it's a good question. I can add that in here as our recommendation.
Yeah, you know what? That, that's a great idea. If we could update the form to state the, the, the person assigning has either read and understood the policy.
And these policies, these forms are all on paper, huh?
What do you mean?
First time they log into the system, they have to consent first. Well, I guess the, the sum would go to the parent consent. Just think like anytime you sign up for software, right? You have to agree to something.
Right.
We.
We like our paper.
We always get, and we got just a photocopy that, that came home.
Yeah.
So we had to sign, but it would be great if we could start doing some of this electronically. I don't know where they're getting.
So one of the, one of the things that we did start doing electronically, which I'm really excited about, is all of our emergency cards.
Oh, really?
We started that last year. So.
Oh, that's good.
Right? So when you get it, you have to go on and you have to check to make sure your emergency card is accurate and you just.
That's right.
Check whether it's been revised or that it's correct. And after the first week, if not, then the secretaries have to put on an email to the parents that we haven't received it yet.
That must have been able to save some, just data entry work. That's great.
Yeah, because we already had it in our school spring.
Yeah.
I mean, our power school.
Right.
Database.
Eliminates any error of, that's great.
Right, and any updates. And then, like Lisa, for example, at Boylston, or Judy at Berlin, they get a little flash that what's been changed. So then they have a record and they just check off who's they've received as changes or this is confirmed that it's fine.
Okay.
Yep. So we good with adopting that? And I will add that to the form too.
Yes.
Do we need to? So we need to recommend adoption of, of.
O C I J N D C.
I J N D C. That does not roll off the top.
No.
As, as, as proposed by M A S C, in addition to, to changes to reference that policy on our form, I J N D C dash E.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And this one's the one that takes a while.
Social networking.
I just thought this one was gonna be the most, I, I know we already have a policy in place. I also know that it's one of those things that if you know some of the people and there's, if. I think you, I think you start getting into some concerns that there, that there's restrictions that some people wouldn't consider appropriate or fair or reasonable or, I'm trying to get nice words, but, you know.
Overly restrictive just because of that certain type of technology, is that why?
Well.
So, let me give you one example. I think that you're referring to, let's say Facebook.
Yeah, let's.
Right, there's one.
Choose that as the example, yeah.
There's the example, because that's a big elephant, right? So Facebook. How do we tell them what they should or shouldn't be doing on Facebook or how they can do it without violating their freedom of speech? Right? But yet they have to also, I think, to me, in my mind, social networking is also not just internet, social networking. To me, it's out in the parking lot, you're in the grocery store, right? The same rules that you do in a parking lot or a grocery store, what you say or how you say about students or.
Hey, we say whatever.
Right? And so with Facebook, that rule should be the same. Not, not just because you know how to type, that should you, right? Some of those things that are out there. So that's kind of where it stands.
It, it goes, it goes, as far as the part where we're calling out, kind of like, 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 like we're putting up some, with some kind of guardrails around what we consider appropriate professional behavior. You know, and, and it was expressed in the Word document, at least that we got, we could do before the other one, you know, as, as strongly recommended and encouraged and all these other things that don't say, no, you can't.
Right.
I don't, the, the challenges. I don't, the, the, the challenge is not everyone is going to see those as, oh, yeah, of course, that's how it should be. And at the same time, you know, while I think that, yes, if you have a professional teacher, they're supposed to act professionally. If you have a professional staff person of any sort. But it, it, to your point, where you cross the line into unlawfully restrictive. And, you know, even as basic as like on like Facebook, if there's a, a, a teacher commenting on something that is related to school and is certainly related to what they do in their classroom or something like that. If you have, like, teachers choosing to friend students on Facebook, the Long Meadow example in here, preface just says flat out, no.
No.
Can't do it. Ours doesn't though.
Kind of ours, I think there's too wishy-washy and soft on.
I think it's crossing ethical lines if they are a teacher and they're being friends on Facebook with their students.
You don't have to agree with me on that.
I think it's a cross of ethical lines. Do I think I have staff members to do it? Yes.
Oh, I, I know you have staff members to do it.
Right. Former students, that's one thing.
Right.
Graduates, they've moved on, that's one thing, but when you are a teacher and you have a current student in your school system, I don't think they should be doing that. It's what's hard in this community though, however, in all fairness of the teachers. A lot of our teachers live in our community and some of those students are their neighbors and they might be friends with the fam, and that's hard. That's hard in small communities.
But that, that exists in every community, right? I, I think we should take a much more restrictive approach to the policy than we currently do.
The way the Long Meadow policy was worded, I think that was more definitive in number elements.
Yeah.
And while I like definitive, I'm, I'm not saying it'll be great, I'm just saying I'm hesitant because I'm, I'm trying to respect the fact that this is a small town. A lot of the things that we do here are not that formal. And to be truthful with, and, and I've always, I stated this openly, I like a lot of the elements of our small town.
Right.
You know what, you know, as an example, we talked about how, um, how our school committee meetings are not as, as strictly structured as others that you watch on TV where, you know, they will not take audience questions, they will not take audience comments until it's supposed to be time and the person has to be called on at a time limit. That's part of what makes Berlin and Boylston, Berlin and Boylston, and so it's part of the culture. And so, you know, you know, in, in that particular example, we're able to have effective school committee meetings while allowing that culture to flourish.
And you do have some meetings regardless, where you have to say, we can only have public meeting at this particular time, but it's not every time.
It's the exception and people are ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, would be respectful of that. And it's, I, I can only remember two or three instances where we've really had to clamp it down.
Yep.
Which I really like about, about being here. So, as I was reading the Long Meadow policy, I'm thinking to myself, how, this, this doesn't feel like Berlin and Boylston. And so, I guess my concern is, I, I agree it's more black and white and there's aspects I really like about that because it's not leaving it up to interpretation, it's keeping it, right? But at the same time, it's, it feels to me a little bit too much like we've.
Gone too much the other way.
Yeah, and, um, and just as an aside, and, um, we've been meeting with the Tohonto teachers. And on, we've met three or four times now. And, and in the, in the contract, there is, they, what they can request, and they have, meetings with the school committee, with subcommittee, talk about the culture of the school. Our culture here is important to us. And so, I just feel like, on one hand, I was like, oh, yeah, let's do this, and on the other hand, like, oh, wait a second, that's.
Yeah, you have to find that balance and, and it's really, um, you know, I, each year, I have principals and sometimes I've done it, you know, or principals have done it, they just say, just remind the teachers that when they're right, when they're saying something, when they're doing something, just remind them that even though they wanna speak on a personal level, if they're a teacher, they're always a teacher first on Facebook. They're themselves personally second, mom or dad second or third, when they're, when they're reporting on a Facebook post about something that, and it's hard, some of our teachers are parents, so sometimes they wanna reflect as a parent, whether reflecting as a teacher. And that's a balance that they have to try to take their, their own, they gotta be able to step back. Majority of them can.
And, and, and the people who are gonna have a hard time with it are gonna have a hard time with it regardless of what we put on the, on the paper, so.
Was it mostly about the social media discussions here of Facebook stuff or, you know, whether, I like the way they get to cellular and the text messaging and, you know?
But that does.
Follow the ground.
You know, it is part and parcel, and honestly, that's just talking about electronic forms. One, to Nadine's point, people see each other at the store, people see each other at the, you know, wherever, they're, they're talking in the parking lot afterwards, you know. So, you know, to an extent, this is, this is a much broader issue, so what I was gonna, gonna get to in my very roundabout, long-winded way, I apologize. For now, would we consider, because this goes beyond just what's written here and because it is a culture thing, would we consider asking the administration to, and actually, I had a, like, a thought of a training or like a retraining, but that's actually a much better idea than what I was gonna propose, so I'm gonna borrow it. Could we, can we recommend almost like a retraining, like a formal review of, of, of the, like, standards of conduct? Like the, the, you know, electronic and otherwise, much like we created for the committee not too long ago, a, a standards of conduct, basically. And, and we talked about that at first in one of the workshops. And everyone was kind of, kind of bought into it. And there were some things that each of us probably didn't love in there, but you kind of, you, you talk through it. So I'm kind of wondering if maybe in, as opposed to making our, our policy what would be perceived as perhaps too restrictive, perhaps people would be a little more open if there was a little reminder training kind of thing? Where people just talk about, you know, here, here are the professional standards that are expected.
So, just so you know, they have to do a conducts, a conduct training anyway. It's like, if there's an ethics, a code of ethics and there's a, then there's conduct, he's part of it, but there's also a staff handbook that I developed last year and this policy is in there, and they have to check off that they've read the staff handbook as well, just so you know. So we don't, not that we inundate or nor do we actually expect them to read every piece of it, but if they're signing it, they're saying that they've read it and that they're taking responsibility for it. But we also just do those friendly reminders, I have Diane and, and John and last year it was Paul, this year it's Ace. You know, that is part of the beginning, Karen actually goes into some of those train, those speeches with the, the teachers too, at the very beginning of the year. It's technically supposed to be done within the first thirty days of school. All of those types of trainings and so forth happen at the very beginning of the year as a reminder. Now you can remind them and then when budget starts, honestly, that's when you start to see it again around February and it's kind of like they need a friendly reminder sometimes again for various reasons. But, you know, we do do that, but I, I definitely will put it down here and see if there's a, I can talk with the admin team, I'm meeting with them on the twenty-eighth of August and just kind of remind them that, you know, we need to find, please tell me when, when you would be doing something like this as a reminder about this. I also think what I, what I consider, see what your thoughts are on this one, is I meet with each association every month. I could bring the current social networking policy and the Long Meadow policy and say, we don't wanna go this far, but we know we need to clean this, this was the only guy that we really had. Let's have some discussion, I can meet with the executive councils and just say, can we just have some discussion around, you know, we know we have to make this more stringent, but we don't also wanna make it where we're making it so harsh. I could bring that through just to kind of get some feedback from the executive councils.
I think it would be good to get feedback, I really do. You know, what I like about the Long Meadow is that, okay, it may first read sound restrictive, but it's also protecting both their students better than ours as, as well as our teachers, 'cause they can get, if they follow this, they can get themselves, regardless of what our policy is, into a bad situation if they're not doing this, that's in the Long Meadow.
Absolutely right, absolutely right.
And regardless of what this policy says, this one is much clearer.
Well, and honestly, more clarity, teachers like that too, 'cause they know if it's too vague, they're too nervous about, well, did this mean this or did this mean that? So some of that clarity they do like.
In a tough situation at times, right? And this would help them maybe make a better call or decision with it.
You're absolutely right about the fact that it, it is more protective and that's part of why it adds value if we're in that path. If we end up getting here with a little bit more buy-in.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
I think that, you know, I'm not saying that, that, that we can't do this.
Yeah.
Or we shouldn't do this even.
But it's a strategy of how you adopt something like this.
If we, if we adopt this in that top-down management approach.
Yeah.
I, I think it's not gonna be well-received and I also think it's gonna mess with the culture a little bit more.
Yeah.
But if we say the, we talked about it in the, in with the school committee, subcommittee policy meeting, and we were concerned about jumping here, but we wanted to get your input, this is a very different message. I'm totally aligned with you.
And I actually can announce this as my, with my opening day, that we do have a policy that I've met with everybody and I won't be meeting with the executive councils because we know we need to update it. It hasn't been updated for four years and a lot has changed in four years with social networking. We need to update it, but the policy recommendation that we received is too stringent and we wanna try to find a, an in-between approach.
I don't know, I wouldn't paint it as that, as being too stringent.
Okay.
It's something we're considering and we would like their, their input on it.
Sure.
Right. Does it make?
It adds a lot more clarity.
Can be perceived as.
And, and, and it's, you know, it could be that enough of what the staff feels that that clarity would help give a certain comfort.
Yeah.
And they, and you could also have people, it, it could also add to all the, of the grumbling that is already kind of bubbling and the little background concern along those lines is, I think that everything that the staff got hit with this past year, there's already a lot of, of discomfort while there's a need here. I think we wanna continue to be respectful of the fact that they've had a lot of upheaval in their world and we just wanna not just pile on. So if we can work with them differently, you know, then we, you know, just having the policy set, here you go.
Right.
And, you know, the, the feedback that we've gotten, and we hear it more directly at what Tohonto, because they have a provision in their contract for it.
I think there's a different dynamic there too, for various reasons, at Tohonto than you see at the elementary schools. You know, I think just the way the culture has been over the last fifteen, twenty years, actually, is very different between the elementaries versus.
I would think they also have bigger challenges with this at that, because students are.
Absolutely.
Students are well-engaged in this stuff.
Right.
Okay.
At the elementary level, it's more the parents that are engaged, it's the parents and students that wanna be friends with the teachers or vice versa. And so that's a little bit, you know, yet you have school districts now that have their own Facebook page and then joining their own Facebook. And so the whole thought four years ago of Facebook versus now is very different.
But that's a different use.
Right, you've got blogs, you've got, you know, what about allowing comments on blogs or not or?
And I don't, I don't think anything, even in, in the Long Meadow policy prohibits an official page.
Right, no, it's more about your personal, using your personal stuff. It's different if you have a school, but then you need a policy around that and how to work that.
And I will say honestly, the social networking is hard when you, to follow the policy, not just for teachers, but on the administrative level. It's very difficult because, you know, we put, we use Facebook, we use Twitter, we use, you know, I started off, I'll tell you myself even personally, I started off with Twitter two years ago, before it was even, three years ago, before it was this big, huge thing, whenever it first came out, whatever, two, three years ago, Twitter. So I had a personal one, you start, you know, oh, I like this country singer, I like that country singer, oh, this actress, this, right, whatever, because you didn't have many friends that were in Twitter, but there were a lot of famous people. So you started, you know, you're following or what have you, and then I said, hmm, some people are doing business Twitter. So I started opening, I opened up a Twitter for Berlin Boylston P S. Well, when everybody hears about Twitter, they all wanna be friends with me as Nadine Exstrom, not Berlin Boylston P S, 'cause they don't know about that. So my personal Nadine Exstrom has now become, any comments I have about Berlin Boylston, it's, that's what I've now used it for. So I've even changed how it's being used and why it's being used. It's, all my messages are now going out on Twitter and, you know, the, the followers are coming up. Ace Thompson, our new principal up at the Wessel Minch School, I think he's got three or four thousand followers on his Twitter feed.
That many people in town.
Well, you know, well, he, well, he started it up in New Hampshire and actually he and the superintendent had a contest of who could have more followers. Became a game.
So, and my only person left two dozen tweets, apparently.
I think so, all the administrative team learned how to tweet.
I don't tweet, I just follow.
You just follow, yeah. But, you know, so it's, it's interesting how that's all evolved, with the whole Instagram and these Snapchats and everything in the cloud and Oive. You know, it's just amazing to me what, how much it's evolved, who knows what it'll be in four years from now.
Well, it'll continue to evolve because as, as with the, the early adopters, the students typically are trying to go to the next thing that their parents are in also.
Right.
Right.
Right, you know, and then you also have the Google Docs and the Google sharing and the sharing of documents, what can we, that hasn't come out yet. What documents can we share on a Google Doc versus an email and how is that different or is it different? Like that, that's way ahead of where any policymakers are at right now. You know, and we're all using Google Docs right now, Google Classroom. So, I, you know, I think, I, I would just feel more comfortable to take these and just start having discussion with the executive councils and.
That's great.
Might take a while to do it, but this would be our topic of agenda of discussion of pulling apart some of it and what works.
I think it's a much better approach in terms of making sure that we have that buy-in and we have that, that input. I think it makes a lot of sense.
And, um, in regards to everything that's been happening with the teachers for the last three years of all these state mandates, I, we had a great administrative retreat, three-day administrative retreat and everyone kept saying, I think this is the best retreat we've ever had. It's the fourth one we've had together as a group and, you know, we've all said, I think it's the best one we've ever had. I think the biggest reason is because this year our focus is really about reflection. You know, thanks for the feedback, providing feedback, we see, how do we receive feedback, how do we provide feedback? Providing more feedback, not just to one another, but to our teachers. Looking at the curriculum we've established and how can we just enrich it, not change it, but make it, you know, enrich what we have. The Envision's Math, you'll hear about it next week, you know, our math program where we're actually taking the math program we currently have and it's a two thousand twelve and we're enriching it with the two thousand sixteen, so we're not a new program, but, but just making it better. Taking what we have and making it, so that's really the whole focus this year. N I S C is all on reflection up at the high school, they're gonna be doing so much work in getting their committees together and ready for that visit that we're gonna have for our accreditation, so, you know, that's really where a lot of it is. that we're gonna have for our accreditation. So, you know, that's really where a lot of it is at this year. Obviously our science curriculum, we're still working on our science curriculum and so forth, but it's not, I mean, we had years where we had to catch up from the last decade. You know, we're not there anymore. We're finally feeling like, oh, we can now do what we're supposed to be doing.
That's great.
So that's a good feeling.
Where was the retreat? 'Cause I think I saw your pictures on Twitter.
Uh, we have our, yeah, you did.
But I was trying to say, where is the?
Yeah, no, we go, um, well, let's see, for three years, we've gone to the Webster First Federal Credit Union, uh, the Operations Center. No, this year was the Operations Center. Uh, last year was different. Last year I actually held the administrative retreat at my home.
Okay, that's right, that's what I remember.
Yeah, and this year, uh, we brought it back to the administrative retreat to Webster First Federal Credit Union. We're fortunate that we're able to get the facility for free.
That's great.
A lot of districts have to go to different places for their administrative retreats and they pay a lot of money for those retreats. So we're able to utilize the space and it's top-notch quality. It's right on Greenwood Street in Worcester. It's the Operations Center. And I happen to know the CEO, so I get it for free. He's my brother. So we get the place for free. So that's, I always appreciate that. Yeah, so, all right. So I don't have any others right now. So do we want to set up another?
Yeah.
The other meeting would really be to see what Paul's, um, technology pieces, and I'm not gonna have one anytime soon to go over the standards. That's it. Everything else has been passed. Do we want to wait a couple of months?
Yeah, I don't think we need to plan one yet.
You can wait a couple of months.
To plan it? Yeah, fabulous.
Yeah, 'cause the Technology Acceptable Use Policy, we already have one in place. We just changed the empowered digital piece, which, that can be revised at any time.
Okay.
All right.
Then we just have our meeting next week and Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? No, we got, I got Berlin Selectman on Monday.
Yep, I have that. And Scott will be joining us as well.
Do we need to talk at all about that in advance or is that pretty straight?
I think maybe just you and I should have a conversation just to make sure, and maybe with Julie and Scott to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, so maybe we want to set up a phone conversation for Monday or Friday or?
Yeah, let's do that for Monday. What time's gonna work for you for Monday?
Noon would be ideal.
What time?
Noon. We do thirty minutes at noon?
Yep.
Just do a quick conference call.
Will you call me?
Sure. And invite teams, I'll invite Julie and Scott. I'm still trying to remember how to spell his last name. He started Monday officially.
Very good.
Yep. Poor guy has stayed here, I think, as late as I have every day this week. I said, Scott Pashoyan is our new facilities manager that we just hired and he started officially on Monday. Tom only, yeah, Tom only knows of him specifically because last week we had a meeting about the boiler and we asked Scott if he would join us at night for the meeting. Had a lot of great questions and everything. Let's do a motion to adjourn.
Okay, that's, Sumo, second on the favor.
Aye.